Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you can. Green? Kelly? Jansen?
Yeah.
Newton?
Here.
Pfeffer?
Here.
Swift?
Here.
Chair Fragoso?
Here.
Yes.
Sorry. Approval of the agenda. Do we have any commissioner requests or changes?
I just wanted to note for the meeting and the public, I will be abstaining from participating in the third agenda item due to proximity of my home with the proposed item.
Okay, okay. That's standard procedure for commissioners. Thank you. So there were no, no comments, no changes to the agenda. I'll proceed with the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to address the commission on matters that are not on tonight's agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the commission, may do so by email, in person, or via Zoom in the same manner described previously. Presentations will be limited to three minutes, or as otherwise established by the commission chair if we have many, many people speaking. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings in order to give everyone an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view. Members of the audience should, one, limit their presentation to three minutes. You can say a lot in three minutes. Two, provide comments by email as described above, and commissioners will receive them either at the meeting or prior to. Three, state their view and concerns succinctly. And four, submit any new documents to the planning staff first, directly or via email, again, at Lneal, L-N-E-A-L, at townoffairfax.org to be entered into the record. So with that, we will move to uh, public comments on non-agenda items. So if there's anyone in the public, you have something to ask or to say that is not one of our agenda items, you can please come forward and state your name and, and make whatever comment brings you here. If you're in the audience, you can telephone or Zoom, raise your hand by Zoom, and Tamela will, will find you and tell you when you can speak.
And Chair Fragoso, we do have a hand raised online. Michael McIntosh?
Michael, hi there. Good to have you at the meeting, even if we can't see you. What do you have for us today?
What I want to say, at first I thought you said two minutes for the public ability to speak, and then I saw that you supported three minutes, and I just want to say thank you. Because I've noticed that whether it's at the planning or at the council meetings, they are certainly diminishing the audience, and we're seeing fewer and fewer people participate. And I think that people are really feeling their voice is not included, and their, their efforts are being thwarted. I think that especially at the council, when they restrict our time down to two minutes, when somebody takes the time to wait sometimes three and four hours to speak, excuse me, I think that's certainly bad form. So I just want to say again, thank you, and I support the three minutes because I think it's very important to encourage the public dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. You're, you're absolutely right, and, and typically do the three minutes unless there's like 100 people in here. But Michael is correct. We do encourage people coming forward not only for the items, but also just whatever might be on your mind in this open public comment period for non-agenda items. And with that, we will move on to the consent calendar, but I see there are no items on the consent calendar. Oh, and we did the roll call, so we can move right into the public hearing items.
Chair? For the first item, I'm going to recuse myself on that item, so I'll be in the kitchen.
Okay. Okay. Then recusals, just so the public is aware, often happen if if one of the items before us is a neighbor, or if the commission is somehow associated with the project, or there, you know, some level of interaction, it's best for commissioners to recuse themselves from those specific items. So on occasion, you will see that, and we have two circumstances today. So with that, let's have that first staff report for 54 Madrone Road, application 2224. Linda, please.
Okay, the project encompasses construction of an approximately 144 square foot entry room onto a 1,995 square foot, two-story, two-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-family residence, which will result in a total square footage for the house of 2,139 square feet. One exterior light fixture is proposed on the east, east side of the new front access door. The addition complies with the regu-, all the regulations in the RS6 district. It complies with all the setback regulations, the floor area ratio, lot coverage, and the height regulations. It does require a conditional use permit because the site has a 26% slope, and it's only 15,500 square feet in size and 103 feet wide. A conforming parcel would have to be 43,000 square feet in size and 143 feet wide in order to be complying. So because the site is substandard, I shouldn't say substandard. It's legal non-conforming and doesn't meet the regulations that were adopted in 1973. It requires a conditional use permit. The project will result in a house that's similar in size and mass to other homes on similar sites with similar slopes, and also to homes in the immediate area. It's been sited so that it, it will not visually impact any of the neighboring homes, and we are able to recommend findings for approving the conditional use permit. So we're recommending that you approve resolution number 20, 2022-32, approving application number 22-24, which contains the findings and the conditions for the project approval. And I have one correction to the resolution on page three under condition eight at the top. Once again, I did not insert that changes and modifications and additions or alterations made to the approved set of plans may be approved by the planning commission or the planning director. So we're going to insert that language and any other changes the commission might have to the resolution. And that would conclude my report.
Thank you, Linda. We can entertain any clarifying questions from commission members before we hear from the applicant, if there are any questions?
Commissioner Newton, has your hand raised?
Yes, Commissioner Newton.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Planner Neil. There is a reference also on page two of the resolution at before the whereas clause in paragraph four. At the end, it says, "See Attachment B, area photo of the site." And I assume that's the attachment B to the staff report as opposed to attachment B to the REZO, unless you're planning to attach the plans as an attachment to the REZO, which I don't think you are.
Commissioner Newton, can you clarify what section of?
No, no, I, I understand where this is coming from. So this is, this is being created by the fact that we have some people that are getting reduced plans electronically, and there's an attachment B, which is the project plan set for people that have, am I correct about that? Yeah. So Attachment B is the applicant's project plans and other supplemental support information. And there are photos in, in, in Attachment B. So if you look at the applicant's plans, there are photographs of the project site on page one. So that, that's what that photograph reference was, and we're going to have to try to think of a better way to do that so that isn't so confusing in the future.
Well, you know, I don't mind, I don't mind you referencing the aerial, not area, but aerial photo
Oh, I see.
First page of the plans. A little lower, after the whereas clause in paragraph one, you've got a reference to the plans. It's a little confusing because it says dated received, and there's no date stamp on the plans. I think you just delete the word dated in that one. But you could say, "See the aerial photo" in, you know, the plans received on September 29th, or something, instead of "see attachment B." Because I just don't think you want to put the plans in the resolution as an attachment.
Okay.
Kind of, but yeah, and I would just refer to the aerial photo.
Great, I'll do that.
And then you know, on page four of the REZO is the dark sky compliant language. And I noticed something that I hadn't seen previously, but I looked and it's in all the others in a reference to uplight panels. And it's UPP light panels. So that's correct. It's not UP space light panels.
No, I think it should be UP.
It's in all our previous ones. And I'm sorry that Commissioner Swift had to recuse herself on this one because she's usually the first I go to for dark sky questions. But anyway.
I will double check that because the, the language on this finding was actually provided by one of the commissioners, so I'll double check what it's, unless someone.
It's been a bunch of ones. I looked back in our REZOs, and they all have that UPP light.
Actually, this UPP light.
Why don't we check that?
We'll, we'll check and we'll correct it. We'll make it so what it's supposed to be like.
Those were my, those were my questions. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other? I don't see Zoom commissioners with the hand up. Anyone here? Okay. We asked the applicant to come forward, either the owners or your designers, if you have a comment that you would like to make. Please step forward. If you hit the button, you know, the red light will come on, and then we'll be able to hear you. Anything you'd like to say to introduce your project?
Yeah. Basically, we're just adding, in so many words, a mudroom because we've got a lot of allergies in our house, and my son specifically has allergy-induced asthma. And it was recommended quite a few years ago by the doctor that we have an area outside, or we, some area, he asked if our house has any area that is enclosed that we can leave shoes and jackets and all that. And our entryway is just naturally smack in the middle of our entire living space. There's no little enclave, and we're just getting cyclical asthma and cyclical symptoms that impact sports, and it gets really hard at night. And so we're just basically trying to make a little mudroom to keep the shoes and clothes and allergens and asthma inducers out. That's it. 144 square feet, and it really doesn't impact anything site-wise or anything that would impact a neighbor.
Thank you for your comments. That, that is interesting. The plans are very straightforward. It is really just tucked away very nicely. It's amazing that you could find that space right underneath there. Okay, thank you. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. You can take a seat. Is there anyone in the audience here or in our virtual audience, Tamela, that has a hand up on this item?
I see no hands raised online.
Okay, great. In that case, we'll close the public hearing. This is a very straightforward project with some nice plans. Any commission dialogue? Commissioner Newton?
Well, I agree with you that they're, you know, nicely tucked in here, and overall, I'd support this. I do have one more typo to point out in the REZO on page one, paragraph two. The sentence that begins, "Therefore, the development use of property as approved under the use permit shall not cause excessive or unreasonable detriment to adjoining properties or premises." I mean, you should say, "or cause excessive burdens in the use and enjoyment of adjacent properties." And I don't really have a lot to add to that. I just, I'm generally supportive of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mimi. Any other commissioner comments or, yes?
Similarly, I think it's a great project. When I went by, I don't know that even knowing that this project happened from the street, you would be able to tell a difference. I think it's, it's well crafted. Support of it as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Pfeffer. Is anyone ready to make a motion?
Sure, I can make a motion to approve resolution number 2022-32. The Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number 22-24 for a conditional use permit to construct an approximately 144 square foot entry addition at 54 Madrone Road with the correction noted by Planning Planner Neil on page three, paragraph eight, to add the reference to the Planning Commission to reference the aerial photo in the plans received by the, I mean, received by the town on September 29th, I think. And to change the "of" to "or" in paragraph two on page one. And to look at the question of uplight versus uplight.
I would second that motion as, as as amended by Commissioner Newton.
Excellent. We have a, a motion by Newton, a second by Pfeffer. Can we take a roll call, please?
Kelly? Jansen?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Swift?
He is abstaining.
Thank you. Chair Fragoso?
Aye. The motion carries. Good luck with your project. I hope you have a healthy winter season this year. There is a 10-day appeal period. It's unlikely, but someone within 10 days could say, "Oh, no, I have a problem with this." And they would have to file with the city clerk. There's about a $650 fee for filing an appeal. And once this resolution is cleaned up, staff will get that to you, and then 10 days from today, you can start with your project, and I wish you the best of luck with that. Thank you. Okay, moving right along to item number two regarding 2575 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, application number 22-25, request for a sign permit for a monument sign for the existing Creekside Apartments. Linda, your turn again for the staff report.
Okay, so the project is construction of a monument sign at an apartment complex measuring 4.8 feet in height and four feet in width made out of a hollow heavy gauge aluminum. The monument will be made out of hollow heavy gauge metal and will be surfaced in navy blue. It will be supporting a two-by-two-foot-eight-inch-by-six-foot sign face that will be painted tan. The apartment location address is 2575 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, and the number 2575 will be displayed at the top of the monument post with the 17-square-foot sign face displaying the apartment complex name, Creekside Apartments, in navy blue acrylic lettering with a logo beneath it will be attached to the monument below the address numbers. The address numbering and border of the sign face will be in brushed silver. So the sign ordinance lists signs that are not permitted, and monument signs are not permitted unless the planning commission grants an exception to the sign ordinance regulations and issues a sign permit for the sign. And in order to grant an exception, you have to be able to find that the, the exception is not inconsistent with the purpose and intent of the sign ordinance chapter, and that the strict adherence to the regulation may cause unnecessary hardship if one of the following exists. One, there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions not resulting from any act of the owner or applicant that apply to the location under consideration and not generally to other business or properties in the vicinity. Two, the exception is the minimum necessary to serve the sign's intended use. Three, the application submitted is extraordinary and outstanding in design. Or four, the sign is of historical significance. The, the exception section also requires that the planning commission find that the sign complies with the sign design criteria that are set forth in the code. And I've listed those in the staff report. If you have any questions about them, you can ask me, but I'm not going to read all of them.
Can you just tell us, does it comply with all of?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I mean, I can briefly say it. So the sign has to meet the purpose and intent of the sign ordinance. It can't be garish, excessively brilliant. It must be architecturally part of the design of the building rather than a feature independent of and, and in conflict with the design of the building. The color and material of the sign shall be compatible with the color and materials of the walls, of any wall upon wall on which the sign is painted or to which the sign is attached. It must be designed and installed in a, in a safe manner. And if lighting is installed, it shall not cause glare, glare to passing pedestrians or motorists or cause light pollution. And so the, the proposed 17-square-foot tan sign face attached to the navy blue monument support creates a pleasing design that complements the architecture and exterior colors of the buildings. The sign is being placed in the planting bed where the existing monument sign is, which has a white background with purple lettering up against the tan wall of the, that's adjacent to the carport. So this is an improvement. And the size and location proposed for the sign at the front of this large property where most of the structures are most of the structures at Creekside Apartments are set back as considerable distance from Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, so having a sign out by the street is really necessary to notify passersby that that's where the apartment complex is located. Due to the small size of the landscaping bed, staff is concerned that during installation, the plant material could be damaged. So we've included a condition in the resolution that they submit a landscaping and irrigation plan with their building permit application for the sign. And we will inspect the, the site before the final and make sure that the plant material has has either been replanted and is in good shape. The applicant did submit an email which I sent to all of you, and I've put copies up there because their plants, the plants in the planting bed are in pretty good shape, and they say that the plants are watered manually by the onsite manager and have been for several years now. They're watered once weekly in the winter and fall months and twice weekly during the spring and fall. They indicate that the Sign Factory, which is the company that's going to do the work and that created the plans, have installed all their monument signs for newer assets in the North Bay region, and they've never had any issues with disturbing current plants in and or around the signs, and they've always been very pleased with the work they do. They do the work with care and quality. And they're indicating that if it's required that they remove the plants before the monument sign is installed, we are happy to do that, but they are concerned that they may go into shock or die off as they are disturbing them. So I don't want to read anything into it, but I think they're, you know, they're they're asking that they, I think that they're, you know, they, they want it, they want the requirement for a landscaping and irrigation plan waived, but it can be a very simple landscaping and irrigation plan to just document the plants that are there and, you know, how they're going to be irrigated, and we plan to go out six months after the final just to make sure that all the landscaping has survived and isn't dying off or having issues. So we're recommending that you approve application 2225 by adopting resolution number 22-20-33, setting forth the findings and the conditions for the sign permit approval. Just to make sure if I have any changes, nope, and that, that would conclude my report.
Thank you, Linda. Any questions of staff before we speak to the owners and open the public hearing?
Just to confirm, I think the, the color blue is the same color blue as the window trim on the building, which used to be another color way in the back?
Uh, I have, I have the samples here. The only reason I'm hesitating is that the blue color, it's kind of an interesting material. It's not, it's not probably the, it's not probably the same material as the window trim. It's similar.
But, but it's, it's blue. Blue is the theme of, yes. Okay, thank you.
It's kind of a dark blue from the photo image I have.
Well, the reference is more that the sign uses the same color type as the building currently, whereas in the past it used to be different. So that's the the correlation for one of the conditions.
I, I like the colors. It's it's the only bit of color actually that, that you can see out there. The, the planter base will remain the same brick in the same color that it is currently, right, Linda?
As far as I know, there's no plan to, to do anything to the planter.
Brownish brick. And this will be, this will be not mounted on the wall, but placed directly in front of the wall, up as close as possible to the wall?
I, I believe it's going in the exact same location as the existing monument sign. Uh, I, I believe it's going in the exact same location as the existing monument sign. Which is more of a post sign. It's mounted on two posts, but it's in that planter bed right now and it's. It, it.
It's hard to tell if these are two posts or one.
No, it's actually one. It's like a base. It's like a monument. It's like a monument. So.
Right, so it's a solid base, one.
Right.
Solid base.
Right, and, and they, they included a drawing of how it's going to be installed in their plan. So I think. If you look.
It seems that.
If you turn to the second page, it shows that it's like one post and one footing. Right? And then the monument extends on either side of the concrete footing with the post going up the middle. But it, um, this sign is, it, it complements the building and, and. It's a much nicer color combination than the sign that's there now. Which really doesn't um. Fit in at all with the uh, development.
It, it is a big improvement. Uh, the sign they're proposing, I, I also like it. I'm just, I'm wondering. If the plants seem to be doing very well there. And uh, considering that someone waters them by hand for the last few years. I'm wondering if it's necessary that we require them to pull out all the planting.
Yeah, we weren't requiring that. That was just something that the sign, somebody suggested, I think it was the sign company. Said, well, they could remove, you know, if, if they felt, if they felt they couldn't install it without damaging the plants, they could remove some of them to install it and then replant them.
Okay, because their letter says, if it's required. That we remove the plants, we're afraid they may not do well. And they'll die off as they get pulled out. I, I, I think I, I would be happy to have them. Try to install the sign and, and save the plants. And then, you know, if some of them are lost in the process, then they can. Adjust it at, at that point. Um. I don't know, how do, uh, I'm, I'm not even so sure that, I mean, if. If the plants have lived this long with manual watering, why should we require them to install? Irrigation, how does the rest of the commission feel about?
Chair, chair for go, so if I.
Are we still asking questions though?
Still asking questions before. We go to the public comment.
Uh, given the comment and question for staff. As staff looked at this matter and looked at the small size. Of the installation area and the number of plants there. And the size of the monument sign overall. There was a concern about damage of plant material during installation. A possible suggestion in terms of revised language for you to consider further as you go into your discussion would be something like. Modifying that condition to state, any existing plant material damaged during the installation of the monument sign. Shall be replaced to the satisfaction of the planning department staff. And then go on with the last sentence. A follow-up inspection will be made by the planning department staff six months after the sign. Final inspection to ensure that all plant material. Whether it be existing or new is in good condition. Any plant material that is found to be unhealthy shall be replaced. And in that way. We're acknowledging the hand watering and not asking for an irrigation plan. We are though addressing the possible damage. Uh, to plant material during installation. So I think that might be. As you go further in your deliberation on this, you might consider uh, that alternative language.
Thank you. I do like that and we, we can get back to that. We, before we open the public hearing.
Yep, I just uh, had a clarification question. Uh, in the staff report, it notes that. No new lighting will be installed because there already exists uh, two monument lights. And then I think in the resolution, we say since there's no lighting, there won't be any light pollution and just wanted to.
Yeah, that's because I didn't find the lights till I went out the second time. I'd already written from staff work. They're kind of, so yes, you need, we'll change that.
So.
There are two lights that face the sign and they're kind of tucked under the, under the, like, right up against the uh, planter wall. So they're low to the ground and they just light the sign face.
Um, and would staff reevaluate? Just I know the, the brushed aluminum silver. Would be different than the existing sign with respect to the lights and glare. So I, you know, I don't know that it's going to.
Uh, I think, I think you should ask that of the sign company because I'm not really sure and they are supposed to be in attendance tonight.
Commissioner Newton, your hand raised.
Okay, Commissioner Newton.
Uh, well, thanks uh, for pointing that out about the lighting. I had not picked up on that. So I appreciate that catch. And Linda, if you. Because of the lighting, would you put the dark sky language in this now?
Um, I.
So. Do you think Commissioner Swift might know about the up, up, up lighting?
Well, you know, we, we required dark sky lighting for the last monument sign you did. We just required that it hang over the front, if you remember, the sign at 85 Bellina. So I think there must be lights. That can function. In these fixtures that would meet the requirements, but. Is the fear that they won't be able, that, that might be a good, another good question for the sign company. As if they have experience with having dark sky compliant lights that can fit in these uplight fix. But I, I don't know why if you can have them in the. That you couldn't get them for the, the light, the uplighting.
I don't know, because the, the existing sign is right up in front. And I'm not sure if the existing lights can be adjusted. When the sign is moved back further. So maybe that's something else that. Once it's installed, we could check to see. How those lights work and then leave it up to the planning staff to determine if they should be replaced.
You could do that, yes. And, and the sign company may be able to shed some light on it too. Yep.
Should we then move on to the public hearing though? Is the sign company online? Okay, good. Is the, is the applicant or just the sign company uh, online?
So I'm sorry, we're going to have to open the mic and ask them because I don't have that information from the name alone. So uh.
Okay, well whoever's there.
Dustin, you, your mic is open. Hello?
Yes. This is Dustin.
And Dustin, exactly. Who are you with?
Um, I am with the sign company, the sign factory.
So that's the applicant.
Yes.
Uh, no, Dustin is with the sign company.
Well, we are also.
And they filed the application.
And also.
Dustin, the sign company filed the application for the sign permit for the uh, management company that. And the owners that own Creekside Apartments.
Okay, Dustin, um. Do you have uh, any comments? Did you hear the discussion? That the commission have? If you have any responses or comments to our questions, uh, please feel free to address those.
Yeah, I just wanted, um, talking about the silver, the brushed silver, I think there was a question or concern about um, that material. That's actually just a, like a one inch border on the face. So it's very minimal. Um. We don't work with electrical signs. So most of our signage is. Not illuminated and then we um, let the management company or customer. Put whatever lighting that they want in. Usually monuments aren't allowed to be internally lit um, in a multi-family residential. Complex. So that's why you see the lights that kind of shine up onto the face. Um, so they're not shining out and creating too much glare or. Too much light pollution to traffic and that kind of thing. The other thing I wa- was wanted to talk about was the width of the sign is the same, the base on the, the monument is the same. Width as the current sign. So it's not going any wider. Um. Depth wise, it's six inches deeper. So it's, there's only a three inch, you know, front or back from the current sign as far as. Um, how much plant material is going to be in the way? Um, usually we're very careful as far as digging. Or damaging any plants before we. Dig a footing or put a sign in. So um, I think your concerns are valid as far as. Damaging anything as we can remove any plant and uh, replace it if needed. Um. And I think that's all.
Thank you, Dustin. Just one additional question for you. The existing lights. Currently on that sign, do you think that they will? Adequately and appropriately light the new monument sign?
Um, I do, I do think so if they're, because the face of the new monument sign is. About the same height as the existing one. Um, it should, there should be nothing different as far as um, look or. How the lights are positioned currently. And those are, those are almost always adjustable if you want to move them up and down, side to side slightly to. Adjust them.
Thank you, Dustin. Any uh, other commissioner questions for Dustin? And Dustin, you are here uh. On behalf of. The owner or the management company. So you are the only one that will be speaking on behalf of this project. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Uh, we don't seem to have any more questions, so we'll. Uh, and are there any other uh, speakers, Tamela, waiting to? Comment?
No one else has their hand raised at this time.
Okay, in that case, uh, thank you, Dustin. If you stick around for a bit, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back. To the commission for either discussion or a resolution of a couple of questions.
I have a question for staff. Um, as we talk about the lighting. The applicant has nothing to do with the lighting. It would be the building. Management. He is just installing an unlit. Sign, replacing what is there. Um. And as staff said. After I think the application, after the um, resolution and the staff report was done. Um, staff noticed the lighting, correct?
Mm-hmm, there are two lights. Set in the ground right by the uh, the inside of the uh, planter. Facing up at the.
And staff, did staff see these during the night or during the day? Okay. So I guess. One of my questions for staff would be, how do we address that? Lighting in relation to what we've done previously or any concerns for dark sky as a part of. The application or the permit process so that we ensure that. You know, the existing lighting that is there. Is adequate and doesn't impact. Our dark sky concerns that we may need to address different lighting. As, as a part of this, if that question makes sense.
I, I think it does. And I think um, the way I can respond on this application is that we had. A sign company that was from out of the area, right? And so, so there was a little bit of a disconnect in our communication. They, they believed that there wasn't any new lighting being proposed. I went out there once to look at the landscaping and didn't notice the lighting because it's set into the ground, right? So I didn't discover it till later. And I think both the sign company and I had, had limited ability to contact the management company. You know, I, I um. So that created a little bit of.
And they would, they would, he would be correct in that. As a part of this application, there isn't any new um, lighting proposed at this point in time.
That's right.
Um, but that hasn't been addressed as a potential.
No, but that's why, that's why we included the condition because they're going to have to demonstrate to us. That the lighting or the owner is, whoever's going to take responsibility for that. The building permit is going to have to, with the building permit, show us that they can use lights that are dark sky compliant. And if they can't find any, then, then they can ask for a modification from either the planning director.
Actually.
Or the planning commission.
If, if I may, I think that. The planning director's language and suggestion for the landscaping was excellent and can also apply. For the lighting fixtures. Once the sign is installed, you'll go out there, you'll take a look, was the landscaping destroyed? Do we need to put some more in? Is the lighting adequate? Does it need to be changed? And it can be at the discretion of the planning director or planning staff. If that's acceptable to staff.
Oh, yes.
Through the chair, if I could, and Linda, you may have a condition here already, but. Similar to the other language that we suggested. Regarding the lighting, there could be language added. That the lighting for the sign shall be inspected to assure that it complies with the town's darks, dark sky standards. And modifications required as needed to assure compliance to the satisfaction of the planning staff. So similar to the plant materials. Um, we could address the lighting in this manner with an additional condition. Unless, Linda, you feel you have that covered already.
Think I'm getting confused between staff reports because I thought I had that condition about the dark sky lighting. In this resolution, but I'm not finding it now.
I don't believe it's.
I think on page, I think on the uh, in the resolution. Page one, there's a reference to the fact that there not going to be lighting proposed for the sign. And that's what made me. Lull into the idea that we weren't, oh, we don't have to worry about dark sky. And I don't see a dark sky compliant provision in here. So I think the answer to Cindy's question is you just put the same dark sky compliant provision we looked at in the previous reso. In here and they have to comply with our dark sky provision. I would ask Commissioner Swift if she knows what the. U P P panel. U P P light panel means if that was a typo, it should just be U P light panel. But uh, other than that, I don't think we need to. To, you know, do a lot more than that. I think we would have to address that. Paragraph three on page one. While no lighting is proposed for the sign by the sign company, it's not that there's not going to be any lighting on the sign. So I think you just have to strike that language.
I, I agree. We should strike that no lighting is proposed and. Include the language that the planning director suggested for review and inspection after installation. And add, and I agree, we could add the dark sky language. And I believe uplight is one word, U P L I G H T.
I think that paragraph three though. Is. Could be looked at as being correct because the sign itself is not going to be lit. There's no lighting within the sign that they're putting in. So I think the planning director's suggested comment about looking at the lighting. After that sign is in. And, and ensuring that however that sign is. Lighted, lit from um, external lights meets our standard. If that makes sense.
Yeah, again, through the chair, if I could. Some middle ground on the language here, kind of working with this language. And instead of saying no lighting is proposed, say, and lighting. Proposed for the sign will not cause glare to passing pedestrians or motorists or cause light pollution. Simply say that. And with the condition that we suggested, I think that would be addressed and that in fact would be the case.
Including your previous suggested condition that. Um, planning department looks at that lighting after the sign is in and addresses that with the building management.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, just wanted to uh, chime in to confirm that. That works for me. My, my only concern was that we're missing out at a chance to uh, handle.
handle the lighting and I'm comfortable with the planning director's proposed solution.
Okay.
I might, I'm still confused as to why we wouldn't put the same language we put in every other resolution about dark sky compliant. I'm even shocked that Commissioner Swift would be going down that road, frankly. I, I don't understand it. It's, it's boilerplate language we have in every other reso. You could do what you're talking about and still include the standard. So I'm just really confused.
I mean, it doesn't really hurt to have that standard in there because we want everyone to use dark sky compliant lighting because of how, how other lighting negatively affects night creatures and people's health and ability to sleep. So it doesn't hurt to put that in.
I agree with Commissioner Newton, other than her comment about me not picking up on that.
Is anyone ready to make a motion?
Commissioner Kelly has his hand raised.
Commissioner Kelly, do you have a motion or?
I was just waiting in line to agree with Commissioner Newton.
Do we have a motion then?
I can try this.
Go for it.
So, resolution of Fairfax Planning Commission approving application number twenty-two dash twenty-five for a seventeen square foot business identification sign mounted upon a four point eight foot tall by four foot wide monument for Creekside Apartments at twenty-five seventy-five Sir Francis Drake Boulevard with the following changes. In adding our dark sky compliance standard, which could be number eight on the last page. Altering condition number six on that same page to reflect the language suggested by our planning director. And if the planning director could repeat his suggested language on the lighting, that could be added as well.
Sure. In terms of page one of attachment A, item three, the last portion of that would read and lighting proposed for the sign will not cause glare to passing pedestrians or motorists or cause light pollution. And the reason for that would be that the standard night sky condition, condition eight would be added.
We have a motion by
Just, I'm sorry, a question for staff. And would you then be reviewing that at the time?
We'll go out at night and check it out.
So that's my motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Jensen. We have a motion by Swift, a second by Jensen. Can we get a roll call, please?
Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Swift?
Aye.
Chair Fergoso?
Aye.
Motion carries. Dustin, if you're still there, there is a ten day appeal period, just in case there's a glitch of some sort from one of the neighbors. But staff will pull together a new resolution with the items we discussed this evening. We'll get that signed off for you early, early next week. And you can, staff will let you know when your ten day period is up that you can move forward with the improvements. Thank you for joining us tonight, Dustin. Appreciate your helping us out. Motion passes. Actually, before we move on to the next item, I, I wanna take a, just a minute here. Earlier this evening, I mentioned before the meeting got started that the Environmental Forum, which I worked with for many years, has provided, the Environmental Forum, for those of you who don't know, is an environmental advocacy education program that has been in existence for fifty years. And interestingly, with the recent town council elections that we had, we've realized Councilwoman Goddard made me aware that the town of Fairfax has three council members that are graduates of the Environmental Forum. Councilwoman Goddard herself, Bruce Ackerman, and our new councilwoman, Lisa Blash, all graduates of the Environmental Forum, which I think is quite remarkable for the town of Fairfax and also for the Environmental Forum. And actually, the Environmental Forum student several years back, I'm not sure, Cindy, if it was before you joined the planning commission, one of the students did a report on dark sky lighting, not only the dark sky and the sky, the stars, but also the building codes for dark sky lighting. And that was when we incorporated it into our planning documents and reviews. So just a plug for one of my favorite environmental organizations there and for our three council members who are graduates of that program. So we are ready to move on to the next item unless anyone needs to take a quick break.
Yep, just
I know you, you are
abstaining.
Excusing yourself from item number three, but shall we move forward then without a break? We're on a roll. Okay. So our next item is one oh one San Gabriel Drive, application number twenty-two twenty-six. A request for a conditional use permit for a six hundred and forty square foot media room, study and half bathroom. First floor addition to an existing twenty-one forty-three square foot single family residence. If we could have that staff report, Linda.
Yes, the project encompasses a six hundred and forty square foot first floor, partially below grade addition of a media room, study and half bathroom to a two-story, four-bedroom, three-bathroom, two thousand one hundred and thirteen square foot single family residence with an attached four hundred and seventy square foot one-car garage. The addition will be constructed beneath the second floor, behind the garage, excavated into the slope to create the new space. The construction will require the excavation and off-haul of sixty-seven cubic yards of material. The site has a twenty-two percent slope and based on our slope ordinance, it does not meet the minimum size and width requirements for that average slope. And therefore, this project requires a conditional use permit. The addition will not require any kind of setback variances. It complies with the floor area ratio regulations. I do have one correction to the table on page two. Under lot coverage, the lot coverage already exceeds the permitted lot coverage and the lot coverage predated the adoption of the point three five percent lot coverage. And there's going to be no change to that. It's staying at point four zero. It doesn't require a variance because it's a pre-existing condition. The location of the addition below grades, grade means that it will have no discernible impact on neighboring properties. The only change proposed to the exterior of the building is the addition of four windows to the front of the house just above the existing grade. And on that side, the addition maintains a thirty-foot setback from the front property line and the nearest neighbor is across San Gabriel Drive. So it's over, it's over seventy-eight feet away from the neighbor across the street. The added square footage will not result in a house that's out of scale in, out of size and, and similar, and has a similar mass to the other structures in the neighborhood. Really won't change the outside appearance of the house very much. And so therefore, we're recommending that you approve application twenty-two dash twenty-six by adopting the attached resolution twenty-two dash thirty-four, which sets forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval.
No, thank you, Linda. Are there any questions from commission before we open the public hearing? Yes, Commissioner?
Thank you. Back to the lot coverage, the F A R. In the first table, it listed that the existing is point four oh for the coverage. And then the F A R is point two eight on the second table. The F A R is point three seven, which I believe is correct. So that increase is the result of the additional square foot. It would go from point two eight to point three seven.
I know, I have it here somewhere. I'm just trying to This is ridiculous. How would I do this? My staff's for sure. Yeah, so I'm sorry, I didn't Were, were you, were you questioning that the F I, the F R R didn't go up enough? The F A R?
No, well, the, the lot coverage, right? Basically, the expansion is under the house, so the coverage doesn't increase. But
Right. I, I had an error, I had an error because the proposed lot coverage, that, that lower, it should have said no change instead of point three five. So that was the correction I was trying to make.
Correct. But the existing in the first table shows point four oh. And in the second table, in the comparison table, it shows point three seven, which I believe is correct because you calculated, that's what you get. So where does the four point oh come from?
The first is the required.
No, so table one on page two, the existing lot coverage is listed as point four oh. In page three, the very last row shows a lot of coverage of, oh, it's the F A R.
Yeah, it's the F A R.
Sorry, yep.
No, that's okay.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
We throw a lot of numbers at you. I understand.
I'm sorry, I flipped the two. Thank you.
However, the plans themselves show an existing FAR and a proposed FAR. So they had an existing FAR of twenty-eight percent and a proposed of thirty-six.
I rounded the proposed up because it was thirty-six point six. What, I'm not, am I missing something?
But we're not changing the lot coverage?
No, because the addition is underneath the existing house. So it's dug into the hillside. So it's not, the lot coverage is the area of the lot that's covered by new impermeable surface or patio. So this is going underneath the house and it doesn't project outside the existing house. So it doesn't change the lot. The lot coverage is like a bird's eye view of the percentage of the lot that's being covered by patios, any kind of structure, any kind of impermeable surface, right? So yeah, that's
Yeah, I'm just stating that the plans themselves showed two different figures for the FAR.
Because one, the, the first one is existing, oh, I, no, the FAR, the FAR is the, FAR is the floor area ratio. So when you increase the square footage of the house, the floor area ratio does increase. So that's correct, the way they showed it on the front of the plans. I know, it's, they're two different measurements, but they are similar.
I, I'm clear about how it works. Thank you.
And I'm not sure why we're
So the comparison chart on page three shows the application resulting in five bedrooms. But there's no additional bedroom proposed in this.
Yeah, that may just be an error on my part.
And I think it's four bedrooms.
Just double check.
And I think the bathrooms are different.
Actually, I'm looking at the floor plan right now and it, the house already has five bedrooms. One, two, three, four, five. That, so the error is the four bedrooms. There's already five bedrooms. Am I looking at, if you look at page?
Staff report talks, gives the history in the back, in the background on this application and doesn't talk about a fifth bedroom.
So
And they're not adding a fifth bedroom.
So I think I understand how the confusion came about. The original house was a three-bedroom house. They did a second story addition over the bedroom, I mean, over the garage, and the addition over the garage added two more bedrooms. So the house, as it exists now, and if you look at page two, you'll see the three bedrooms on one side of the house. And you're gonna see, see the stairs that go down, you'll see the two bedrooms over the garage, two bedrooms and a study.
It says one bedroom, though. It says adding a fourth bedroom, not adding two.
It shouldn't have even said adding a bedroom because they aren't adding a bedroom at all. They're just trying to add a media room.
No, I mean, previously, when it was remodeled to add the bedroom, bathroom and study over the garage, it only says one bedroom and you just said it, they added two bedrooms at that time.
Yeah, that, that may, that may be because it's possible that the building permit I was looking at said it was bed, one bedroom, but this is what's out there now. So when I'm looking at old, old stuff, it, it may have said one bedroom. But the, the, the plans are accurate. I would have to go back and look through the file. You know, the, the record keeping here wasn't exactly.
Maybe this is the explanation. The old drawing shows one of those rooms as a study. So four bedrooms and a study. Four or five bedrooms. It depends how you read it.
Yeah, and a lot of times we don't have the old plans anymore, right? So I'm going off of a written description on an application form that doesn't always provide the most detail. So that's where the discrepancies often come from.
The master bedroom on the plans does not count it. Well, it's one and then two, three, four. And the study is the fifth bedroom or a study. Existing. There's no, there is a, there's no closet in it.
Right.
Well, you need a closet if it's a bedroom.
And I changed it on their drawings. I crossed it out and changed it. Notice it's correct. The parcel number is correct.
Shouldn't we can ask the applicant?
But the upper, the upper floors of the house are not being touched.
Right.
Yeah.
But we still don't know. Is it three, four or five bedrooms?
Well, if you, that's why I'm trying to have you guys look at sheet two. Cause that's the existing house floor plan.
Through the chair, I think what you might wanna do is, as you suggested, you ask the applicant for description of the bedrooms and, and programming or layout of the home, the floor plan.
That sounds fine. And we can, I mean, these are just preliminary questions. We still have the public hearing and more discussion to
And my other question would relate to the bathrooms that we're identifying three point five bathrooms.
Yes, you brought that to my attention. It's actually going to end up being three full bathrooms and two half bathrooms. So the house right now has three full bathrooms and one half bathroom. And the new addition underneath is going to add a second half bathroom.
So it'll be three and two.
Yes.
Those are my questions.
Commissioner Newton has her hand raised.
Yes, Commissioner Newton, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, on the resolution. Page two. Uh, condition number two. Find this. And you know, it's like I look at this language. Repeatedly and just one day, all of a sudden it jumps out at me as odd. Um. It says, prior to issuance of any of the building permits for the project. The applicant or his assigned shall, A, submit a construction plan to the Public Works Department. Which may include. But need not be limited to the following. And the word may there, uh, strikes me as odd. Because if you're telling them that they might include items one, two and three. Hey, they might not. So I'm just kind of wondering. If that may is correct there. Or if, if it should say, which shall include. But need not be.
Well, we, we leave it up to the discretion of the Public Works Director, but maybe there's a better way to say that. You know, so, so a lot of, like on, on streets that are really wide, where there isn't going to be a problem with blocking traffic. Often the Public Works Director will say, oh, we don't need to know the construction delivery route. So I think maybe you could insert some kind of language like submit a construction plan. Uh. Which will include at the discretion of the public, which may include at the discretion of the Public Works Director, the following.
Yeah, that'd be fine, or, you know. Subject to the Public Works Director's approval or whatever language you want to put. Okay, and then, um. Oh, gosh, I hate to ask this, but what about the dark sky provision in this one?
So there, there really is no lighting proposed on this one. There's no new lighting proposed. Cause the addition is under the house and below grade.
But we have the standard language about the numbers on the street. Let me just see where that is.
That's the fire, that's the fire department requirement.
Okay.
The fire department require, requires lit. Address numbers.
And that doesn't open the door for us to comment on the lighting. All right, thank you.
Okay, is the applicant? Available for us? Or their representative, Tamla, that you can see?
Yes. The applicant is online and has been unmuted. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Sujatha Sankaran and I'm here with my husband Bobby Singh. We're the owners.
Hello.
So we, the reason why we put this, uh, application through is because we have three kids. And my elderly parents are also staying with us, and so we need additional room. Um, we both, especially due to COVID, we've both been working from home quite a bit as well. And we need sort of separate places. We can have our meetings when we have to have work meetings at the same time. And to clarify some of your questions about the current plan of the house, we, the way, so we have five bedrooms, but we're using it's. Um, we're really using four bedrooms, so the kids have two of the bedrooms. And then we, we have, we have one of the bedrooms for us. And then there, there's, we're using one of the rooms as a family room, and then we have a guest room. And the plan is that my parents will use the family room, the current family room. And the downstairs, we're gonna build, we would like to build a family room downstairs and a, and a, and a study room. So we'll be able to do our work meetings in the study room. And then we can use the downstairs room as a family room for the kids to be able to play in. So that's what we're, that's what we're hoping to do. Bobby, I don't know if you have any other.
Oh, yeah, the only other thing I wanted just to clarify was, so I think you had mentioned, so the, our. Current master bedroom that we're using, that's the one I think, sounds like that was listed as a study. In the, by the previous owners and the permit. Um, and maybe they use it as a study. It does have a built-in bookshelf. But we're using that as the, as a bedroom. That's our master bedroom. And right now, when we do our meetings, we have a table right next to our bedroom from where we do, we do work meetings. And happy to answer any questions or clarify other stuff.
I'm sorry, could you just clarify? The upstairs, where your master bedroom is. Across from the master bedroom is a room labeled study. Are you saying that's the fifth bedroom? That you use.
So our boys, our two boys share the, the bedroom that's right next to what our master bedroom. I think they were, might have been using that, the boys' room, what's currently the boys' room. I think they were maybe using that as a study. So we're, we're using that as a, a kid's bedroom, and then the master bedroom is right next to, to that.
Thank you.
Basically, there's two bedrooms and, and a bathroom and, and this part of the house, this is the part on top of the garage that was done. And I guess we're not really clear, or at least I'm not clear on which one they were using it as a study, but, uh, we're using both as, uh, as bedrooms.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions, uh, of the applicant? Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Um, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and then, uh. Let you know how that goes. Commissioners? Please do.
Uh, thank you, yes. The, so I've been looking at, you know, the house is relatively big. If you compare it to the others, but not beyond what's, uh, what's allowed and what's out there. I think the expansion is pretty clever. The exterior of the house doesn't really change. Uh, the coverage doesn't change, so it's a very smart way to create that extra space without really affecting anything around it. So, um, I'd be in favor of it.
And the only thing that's changing ex, from the outside is just the addition of the windows.
Correct, yeah, just the window, that's the only thing the neighbors would see, and so it, it's clever.
Yes, I, I appreciate that comment. I also noticed that I was going through the plans thinking. Oh, this is a big house. Oh, we're adding all this space and all this room. And yet it doesn't change a thing. It's all within. Uh, within. The original structure, so it is a smart design and should work very well for their extended family. Any other comments or Commissioner Newton, you have your.
Yeah, thanks. Um, just a, another typo on, uh, the first paragraph, the first whereas clause. I think, uh. Somebody intended to put the date that the application was submitted. After the address, one oh one San Gabriel Drive on.
Yep.
And I think you just delete the word on because you've got, uh, the date of the public hearing in the next paragraph. And I agree with Commissioner Jansen, you know, and, uh, Chair Fregoso, I, I also agree that this is, uh. Nifty.
Okay, does someone have a motion since we all seem to be in agreement?
I can make a motion. Um, I could not quickly place the, the correction you mentioned, Commissioner Newton. Uh, I was scrolling through the pages, but.
The very first whereas clause.
Very first whereas clause. Right. Um, so I'd like to make a motion. Um. To adopt application twenty-two twenty-six for conditional use permits. To construct a six hundred forty square foot room, uh, media room, sorry, study and half bedroom addition. To the existing single-family residence at one oh one San Gabriel Drive. Um, with the correction of the first whereas in the resolution. Um, per instruction of Commissioner Newton. I'll keep it simple.
It, it, a friendly. A friendly, uh, edit to that is the. The whereas two A. Uh, there was a recommendation that we add at the discretion of the Public Works Director. For, uh, review of. Delivery routes and schedules and all of that. Uh, so if that's acceptable to you.
Correct, yes, that's acceptable. Thank you.
We have, uh, Cindy, did you have another, uh, edit somewhere? Does that cover all of them? Okay. So then, how about a second?
A second.
Commissioner Kelly, thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
Kelly?
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Swift?
Hi.
Chair Fregoso?
Hi. Thank you. Uh, the motion carries, uh, Sujatha and, and Bobby. Um. Very minimal changes to the language, nothing changes for your, your plans. Staff will prepare the revised resolution, which you will need before you can move forward. And they will also tell you at that time what your ten day, when your ten day appeal period ends. So you can get started, uh, right away with your improvements before. We hit any, any bad weather. Thank you very much. There is. A ten day appeal period with a fee of about six hundred and fifty dollars to the. City clerk, if anybody, uh, should decide to take that route. Thank you very much. Motion packed. Those were very straightforward projects. And, uh. We have, do we have a planning director's report this evening? Great, looking forward to it. Also. If, if appropriate. I was not able to. Listen in. To the town council's meeting last night. Is that when? Uh, Dayat and Batia did a presentation on the housing element? If you have. If that's so, and you have any comments, uh, on, on their update, uh, I, I'd be interested in hearing that.
Uh, sure, um, Chair Fregoso, and actually that's a part of the director's report tonight, so. A few items were considered last night at the town council meeting. There were a couple of items that the planning commission had considered earlier. And forwarded on to the town council. And council introduced those two items. There were two ordinances. One had to do with prohibiting new gas stations in the town. And prohibiting the expansion of. Infrastructure, fossil fuel infrastructure. So that ordinance went forward to the town council. The town council introduced the ordinance and that'll move forward for a second reading and adoption. The other item, the other ordinance that you had looked at was the transfer of authority to consider. Driveway widths and the number of driveways. That's something that the town council had been looking at over time in terms of granting variances. And it really added an extra step in the process where that, that issue came up. And so your recommendation to the town council was to. Basically transfer that authority to you, and the council head suggested that. The council received your recommendation, they introduced that ordinance, and that too will go forward for second reading. Um, in addition, yes, uh, Chair Fregoso, last night. The. New, new project manager, Andrew Hill for Dayat and Batia gave a presentation. And it really is a transition for us, for our community in terms of the housing element project. And Mr. Hill, Andrew Hill, talked about a few things. He talked about. The work that had been performed to date and kind of reviewed that. And I'll go into a little more detail on that. He also talked about their approach, approach to moving forward. With the town's housing element update. And then he also talked about and presented a preliminary timeline for completing this, this project. So, in terms of some of the key points or highlights from this presentation. I actually have a copy of his PowerPoint that he used last night. And by the way, what we're doing in terms of information for the community. We're migrating, we're in the process of doing this. We worked on this yesterday and again today, we're migrating information from Fairfax Speaks, that website. To the town's website and we're retiring Fairfax Speaks. So even late today. The town's website received information from Fairfax Speaks. And in, that includes actually the PowerPoint presentation. That Mr. Hill, Andrew Hill, presented last night. So that is on the town's website for your review and the community's review. So as Mr. Hill was talking about the overall project. Kind of went through work done to date, so as you're well aware. Uh, a lot of work has been done. And so, for example, the odds, the objective design and development standards. A lot of work has been done on that. He, um, acknowledged that. He also acknowledged that the constraints analysis that's part of the housing element update, quite a bit of work had been done on that as well. He talked about the sites inventory and work done on that. Indicated that, uh, his team and staff, in fact, will be going out this coming week, will be going out on Monday. And reviewing the site, so. A key aspect is reviewing those sites, those nineteen sites that have been identified. As opportunity sites to achieve the arena. Again. The regional housing needs allocation for Fairfax, the town of Fairfax is four hundred and ninety units plus a margin. Those nineteen sites, um, as have been identified. Uh, would, we believe, be able to satisfy that arena objective, that assignment. But they'll want to take a look at it. This new team will want to take a look at those sites. And, and they'll need to, to verify the feasibility of those sites in terms of meeting. HCD, Housing and Community Development Standards, in terms of feasibility. Can those sites truly yield the number of units at the income levels that have been identified? So he, he reviewed, you know, work done to date, including the items I mentioned. Um, sites, constraints, uh, he also talked, by the way, about affirmatively. Furthering fair housing AFFH and the work that's been done on that. So at this point. Their objective is going to be to take that existing work and build upon it and, and refine it and complete it. In terms of just focus, the primary focus of the team at this point is confirming those sites. In terms of feasibility and yield, and then also working on the actual draft housing element. And so that, that's an area of work that there has been a, a partial draft prepared. There's a fair amount of work that still needs to be done on that. Uh, that will be a focus. And the objective is to try to get that done. And let me look at. Some timeline information to give you kind of a sense of the general timeline. So again, as I mentioned, we'll be looking at sites. And, and basically firming up the sites analysis in the very near future. We'll also be looking at schedule, overall schedule and firming that up. And we expect to be doing that over the next week or two. As I mentioned, the town's website will be the primary portal for information. And that'll be indicated in the town's newsletter. It'll be clearly indicated and indexed on the website. We're also going to set up and schedule a subcommittee meeting, as you know. The town council has identified two members of the council as subcommittee members. Housing subcommittee members to work with the team, with the consultant team and staff on this. And we're in the process of setting up that first meeting. Kind of an introductory meeting with this team and that's scheduled at this point, tentatively for December fifth. We're also contacting, pardon me, HCD staff. And we'll be meeting with HCD staff, pardon me. Will be meeting, pardon me, will be meeting with HCD staff soon, very soon. And the idea there is. The Housing and Community Development staff encourages consultation. So we'll want to meet with the HCD. Staff that's going to be actually evaluating, reviewing our document. And introduce our team, introduce our staff. And initiate conversations with them and we'll be doing that in December. In terms of preparing that local public review draft. The Housing Element Local Public Review Draft, that work is going to occur. Through January, November, December, January. And that, that's a key piece of work that needs to be done. And what we're hoping is that the local public review draft can be released, say, early February for the 30 day required public review. And after that's reviewed, we'll receive comments during the review period. The comments will be responded to and that draft. Housing. As a report, housing element, along with all comments received and responses to those comments will then be sent off to HCD. And we're hoping to be able to forward. The, the local review draft with comments to HCD in March for 90 day, 90 day review. So HCD has a standard 90 day review period. During that 90 day review period and during this, this time leading up to that. A lot of other work will be done. So for example, I had mentioned the odds, I had mentioned. Looking at other aspects such as sites, constraints, et cetera. In addition, as you, as you're aware, this project also includes an update to our safety element. And we have a draft safety element, but that'll need to be finalized. We also obviously need to do CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. So. As this team moves forward to prepare the local, local draft. The local public review draft of the housing element, they'll be also doing. Work on finalizing safety, odds. That kind of work. And then. They'll be moving into CEQA. We, we've already done the scoping session on CEQA that has occurred. So we have done scoping. We have collected comments on, on CEQA. So as. This document is completed, the housing element document is completed, sent out for the 90 day review period. The, the team will focus in earnest in, on completing the CEQA documents so that as HCD gets comments back to the town. And that's probably going to be in May. Hopefully late May. That we have our CEQA document. Information back from HCD and we're looking at this point at likely a June, a June day, June 2023. For certification of the EIR. And adoption and certification of the housing element. So that, that's kind of the, the overview. The, the town is behind the curve. I think we, we've known that for a long time in terms of the statutory. Deadline, the statutory deadline for certification, adoption and certification of the housing element is actually. January 31st, 2023. There is a 120 day grace period. That extends it out to May 31, 2023. What I just said a couple of minutes ago was that we're expecting to complete this project in June of 2023. So. With the work that's yet to be done, we are not anticipating. Completing this within that 120 day grace period. We do expect to meet with HCD staff, as I said, very soon. And, and have regular consultations with HCD staff. And be able to, to show a good faith effort and diligence in terms of the work that needs to be performed. So that, that's kind of the overview. At this point. The team that we've brought on board Diet and Batia, they're working on a number of housing elements. It's a very deep team, a very qualified team. We have a lot of work to, to be done. And I think we have a good team to assist the, the community to complete that work. It's going to require a lot of diligence and focus over the next few months. So that's, that's kind of my overview. Again, two ordinances. That you had looked at recently, went to the town council last night. They received the first reading, they're moving, moving forward. And then we had the presentation by the representative from Diet and Batia. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that, that summary. I appreciate it. And. We're, yes, we're a little bit behind the curve. On the other hand, we've had so many staff changes, but. I think we have a good track record in terms of moving forward with the work. Diligently, albeit a little bit slow. But it's, it's really coming together now. And I think with. With this new team of Diet and Batia, things will move along more smoothly. And staff will have more support, which is. The most important thing. So. That's, that's good news.
So some questions on that. The PowerPoint that was presented. At the town council meeting, that. If it wasn't already on the agenda for the council meeting packet, that would be added to the agenda packet. As well as. Being placed on where we're storing housing element. Information. I'm assuming since we're putting. PowerPoints attached to our. Town Council. Packages so that they're all together.
Yeah, I, you know, I can't speak for how the town clerk is going to handle that necessarily. But I do know that. The PowerPoint was placed on the town's website. And I do know that Michelle Gardner and I talked about this. Last night and today. And. My expectation is that it, it is on the town's website. And I know that the web consultants we are working with, the website consultants we are working with. Put it up on the housing element. Component of our town's website. I saw it.
And the housing element component of the website. If you go to the planning department on the website, there's a whole section of the housing element that has. Some documentation there. So I'm assuming for the benefit of the public that that's where all that. Documentation is going to reside similar to where we've had other. Major projects reside. And I know there's, I know there's a link on the homepage that says housing element. I'm assuming that is taking. You to the planning department. Section where all that documentation. Is going to be. Added.
Commissioner Swift, you're, you're accurate about that. We, you know. Not that long before this meeting tonight, I was actually talking to the web consultant going over that. And so. They late this afternoon put this information up. And so what I observed in testing it. Late this afternoon, early this evening was that as you go to planning and building. And then as you go to the left-hand column and the various categories, there will be housing element. If you click on housing element. You will get to information on this project, including last night's presentation.
So. Another question, and you mentioned the safety element. So while the. Planning commission, I think we had a subcommittee that did some work. On the safety element and staff has said that the safety element is pretty far along. We haven't seen, and I know that's not up there yet, we haven't seen. The state of the safety element. So when we worked on the safety element before. We weren't addressing, I believe, requirements like Senate bill requirements that. Information that need to be added to a safety element yet. So I would be interested in seeing. Kind of where we are on the safety element. As a whole and how it fulfills the requirements of things like. Senate Bill 99, I believe, for example. So I'd be looking forward to when we. Post. The safety element in its draft form now to see. Those kinds of changes.
If I could, you know, comment on that, the, the safety element will certainly migrate to this site and be available. One of the things that Diet and Batia is doing, the team is doing. They're evaluating these documents, these existing documents like odds. Objective design and development standards like the safety element. Looking at applicable state laws and requirements and making sure that those. Documents address requirements. And so. If the safety element. In its current form doesn't, it will. And that's part of their charge.
Can you remind us who the subcommittee members are for the council?
Sure, I'd be happy to. There are two subcommittee members. And Vice Mayor Chance Cutrano is one. And the other one is Councilmember Barbara Kohler. Those are the two subcommittee members.
Can you repeat the last name?
I'd be happy to. Councilmember Barbara Kohler.
And my last question is on the CEQA. And its applicability to what we come up with. As a draft, we're. We're sending a draft, we will be sending a draft and working with HCD on, on what we identified, but the CEQA document. Won't be. Completed for that at that time, correct?
That, that's correct. So for example. Information that's really key in terms of doing the CEQA document. For example, would be the sites analysis. So. Although the community has identified 19 sites to date. There needs to be an analysis of those sites. To determine feasibility. Satisfying HCD Housing and Community Development State requirements in terms of feasibility. Will they yield the number of units that we are suggesting? And will they yield the, the types of units in terms of affordability level? So that. That level of detail and analysis needs to be completed. But. Site, the sites analysis is key in terms of the CEQA analysis. In addition. Completing that local public review draft, getting comments will be key as well. So. As I mentioned earlier, as we complete work or do further work on sites. Complete the local public review draft, put it out for local public review for 30 days, receive and address comments and get that off to HCD. That will be the time when. More detailed. And focused work will occur on CEQA. Again, as I mentioned, there's a 90 day review period by HCD. During that 90 day review period. I would anticipate significant CEQA work being performed. And we would have the foundation to do the CEQA work. We've already done. The. Scoping in terms of, you know, from the local population. Are there issues that should be analyzed in the CEQA document? What types of issues could result in environmental impacts that should be studied? We've done that. So we have that. We need to do the, the analysis, sites, housing element, and then focus on CEQA. And then. When the comments come back from HCD and we're hearing, in fact, I was on a call yesterday. HCD is taking 90 days typically. There's, there's been discussion, well, can HCD expedite the review to help local agencies? They have a lot of work. They're still wrapping up from Southern California, from SCAG, Southern California communities. So what we heard yesterday in a call was. The 90 days is 90 days, not to really expect to get comments sooner than 90 days. The good news is that. Diet and Batia, like other firms at this point. You know, have had experience in Southern California. We're all looking at the comment letters that are coming forward. Not just from Southern California communities, but from Northern California communities now, because a number of communities have submitted, you know, first round. Drafts and have gotten detailed comments back and they're, these comment letters are. 15, 16 pages long. But the, the good news is that. Communities like ours can learn from those comment letters. What is HCD focusing on? What can we do in terms of what we forward to HCD, hopefully? To not get a 15 or 16 page long comment letter, but be more on target with what they're looking for. In any case. I think Diet and Batia not only has, you know, prior experience, but we also have comment letters. And information from a lot of other jurisdictions that will help us in terms of trying to be more on target in terms of our, our document.
So in the case where. The CEQA. Study identifies. Issues, potential issues, then I'm just thinking of like the, how the process works. That we would then potentially go back and adjust. Our documentation and then. Have that be an iterative process with HCD, correct?
That, that's correct. I mean, I, I think that. The idea is to. Try to get the CEQA document as close as possible. In terms of meeting basic CEQA requirements. And as we get comments back, let's say from HCD. Fine tuning, adjusting commissioners, you suggested the CEQA document accordingly. But in terms of CEQA, I think we should be able to get it pretty close. And there will be, you know, not just the project, but alternatives considered as well.
Yes, Commissioner Jensen.
Thank you. So during the presentation yesterday, Mr. Hill made an interesting comment. You will not be surprised that they'll ask this, but. At some point, he, he. Seems to suggest that the objective design standards need to be rolled into the Fairfax zoning. Code. So how, so this goes back to my question from a while ago. Does that mean that we would not have an odds and a separate zoning? Do they, are they going to merge? Is that part now of the scope or is this still part of something in the future?
It, it's part of the scope and. Again, as we did before, as you recall in our discussions before on odds. We, we hadn't really concluded exactly how to handle the odds. In terms of. Would, would they be integrated? More directly into the zoning or land use code or be. Kind of more a standby document. In any case, the odds would be adopted by ordinance. So. That, that's for sure. So the odds as they're finalized would be adopted by ordinance. And then I think something that we, with our town attorney, really need to sort out is exactly. How do we integrate the odds? You know, to make it, to make the odds. As usable as possible, as understandable as possible for. For you as decision makers or our developers, public members, staff members, all parties concerned that would be using them. And. It will be an ordinance for sure. To what degree it's integrated, that's something yet to be determined, to just be very honest. As, as we know. There are certain. I'll say objective design and development standards already in the code. We talked a little bit about those in terms of creek setbacks, et cetera, as an example. So it's. Like we often do, kind of looking at other communities that are maybe a step or two ahead of us. What have they done? What are some examples in terms of? Integration, I'll use that word. That makes maybe the most sense for our community Fairfax in terms of, again. Adopting the standards, but making them as usable and understandable as possible. And. I think what we'll need to do with Diet and Batia and the team. Is to really look at some of the other communities. What, what have other communities done that seems successful, seems. Like in terms of being able to use the odds and. And, and they're understandable and easier to work with for all of us. What are some good examples? So we need to do that. That, that has not yet been done.
Okay. So yeah, so the, what I hear is that it's a more holistic approach to the degree possible. And so I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
That's a good question and has been the question from the very beginning. How do we incorporate? Those documents from the time we went out. To contract for an odds consultant. Is there also an opportunity that it could be an overlay of some sort or? It has to be obviously incorporated. It has to be obviously incorporated into the housing element, but the format, there could be different formats for doing that. I'd be really curious to see how other cities have done it. I've been watching, a couple of our local towns have submitted preliminary comments to HCD, but no one's talked about how they actually go about incorporating odds to codes.
But I could, you know, you you mentioned one way of doing that and and that's, you know, an overlay. So that that wouldn't necessarily be for all aspects, but that could be a part of incorporating, integrating odds into our zoning code. So that that's one tool um that you mentioned that, you know, we certainly will be looking at.
No, because I was just gonna say, odds wouldn't necessarily apply to everything that we do. So if we just had a single family home, right? I mean, you wouldn't apply odds to that. Um the idea is that it's for multifamily, correct?
You're you're absolutely.
So maybe an overlay or or some other method of of identifying its applicability.
Well, you're you're absolutely right. And, you know, as you recall, in terms of the odds document that we were working with, are working with, uh it it clarifies applicability in terms of, you know, multifamily as an example, how it applies. So, yeah, you know, how do we integrate that? Because we have different zoning districts, for example. And so how do we do that? So I'll go back to what I said before. It's it's yet to be determined. I think, as we often do, as I mentioned earlier, kind of trying to get ideas from others and finding the best ideas and trying to bring them here and incorporate them would be what we would do.
It it's kind of interesting, a new twist for housing elements.
Uh again, it's, you know, this whole concept of streamlining, right? It's, you know, how can we, as a local community, come up with design and development standards that really fit this community, Fairfax, and and give a clear signal to people, developers, property owners that want to develop housing, multifamily housing, uh more affordable housing in this community so that the process is streamlined and the community gets uh this sort of development that it's looking for, hoping for.
Any other questions or comments for our planning director? Did you have other elements uh to report to us this evening?
No, not really, not not. Well, I could mention one or two more things. Uh parklets, for example, we've talked about parklets before and just a bit of an update on parklets. And uh, you know, I feel like we're we're making progress. The building official, Mark Lockaby and myself have been going out, meeting with some of the business owners. And Mark went out and met with a couple of business owners today. And so we we do have, as as I think I've mentioned to you before, we, you know, have a checklist. We've gone out, we've inspected all nine existing parklets. And now we're meeting with the parklet owners, going over those uh checklists and letting them know what we've found and what they need to do to modify those existing parklets to conform with the town's adopted standards and regulations in the parklet program. So we have the fee resolution, we have the design standards, we're meeting with the parklet owners. And uh the way this is set up, if they move forward and submit a deemed complete application by December fifteenth of this year, the the fees are reduced. And so Mark and I are are going out, meeting with the parklet owners, reviewing with them uh the requirements, giving them a packet. We're also working with our web consultants right now on establishing an opportunity to apply for parklet, a parklet permit uh registration or permit online. So we're we're doing that. That's kind of interesting. We're meeting with the web consultant on that. And the packet of information that Mark and I have put together, we've given to the web consultant. And they're working with that to kind of set set up the opportunity for business owners to apply for the parklet permit and pay the fees online. So we're doing that. So that's moving forward. Uh short-term rentals, uh we've talked about that in the past. We're working with that. Kara Spencer in our department is taking the lead on that. Uh we had a meeting today with Granicus Post Compliance. And that's the online platform, Granicus, that we're working with to to help set up that program. And so again, the idea is to have an online application process and to be able to pay fees online. So we're working with Granicus on that. Uh as you know, recently, the the town council uh approved, adopted the rent stabilization program and the program for just cause eviction. So we're working on setting those programs up as well. So there's there's quite a bit going on in in our department and everybody is is quite busy. But uh those are some of the key things that we're working on right now. And again, the day-to-day applications that you're seeing as well, um adding adding to those, you know, more major projects.
David, I have a couple of questions for you on the parklets. Are the two parklets on Bolinas, the Roastery and um the Japanese restaurants, are those allowed to stay the way they are? Or are there any changes proposed to those two? And then my other question is, uh I wasn't able to catch the council's review of the items, but are they really allowing music in any parklet?
Uh you you know, I think I reported out on that before and the uh the the town council is is basically, uh you know, allowed for a pilot to allow for some lightly amplified music in in the parklets. So that that's, you know, something that's unfolding in terms of the details. We're still working on that. But again, the directive or direction is to, as a pilot test or pilot, to allow for um lightly amplified music in the parklets, believe up to two performers. Any equipment and the performers would need to be contained within the parklet, uh not on the sidewalk or elsewhere, but within the parklet area. But again, it's a it's a pilot and it's it's something that we're working with, I'll say.
But that would not come to the planning commission?
It would not come to the planning commission. No, it would not.
And then uh back to the Bolinas Avenue parklets, there were some concerns that, and maybe I asked you, that the Roastery's parklet was quite large and really close to the intersection. Will they be required to scale that back at all? Well, it sounds like no.
Um you know, in terms of intersection locations, what we've done, what Mark and I have done is we've we've gone out to Parisian Associates. So the the town of Fairfax works with David Parisi's firm, as is probably all of you know. And there are transportation consultants here in Fairfax. And we've asked them to provide information on line of sight and setback uh for vehicular and pedestrian and bicycle safety at intersections. So we've gotten some information from them. And so as Mark and I go out, and I say Mark and I, because we're going out, but Mark is really the person who, you know, handling this more directly. But in any case, uh we're we're looking at establishing a standard, you know, based on the information from Parisian Associates at intersection locations to assure the public safety. So we are looking at that. I it can't be more definitive than that at this time. Across the street, though, you had mentioned the other one across the street. And as you may recall, the the town council and perhaps yourselves as well, but the town council for sure, as I recall, were very concerned about making sure that you could see into the parklets. And, you know, in terms of the adopted standards, the idea is that you can see in and that they be open, et cetera. And as you know, I think, I'm sure you do, the uh the panels on the one across the street, uh they're they're tinted. And so Mark and I did meet with the the owner there. And we we had our checklist of of items. And one of the items had to do with the replacement of those tinted panels uh so that they would be translucent or clear. And and basically, the adopted standards uh are our guide in terms of evaluating these existing parklets. And so we have a checklist and then we meet with the business owners and go through the checklist. And so, you know, we're asking them to modify, retrofit, to meet the standards that have been adopted by the town council. So we did have that conversation with that particular business owner.
Have to find a way to clone Mark because and and Linda probably as well.
Well, and you know, threefold, I think, at least. You're right. Yes, absolutely.
So a question um to the chair's comment on the music in the parklets. And you mentioned a pilot. Has that pilot been defined yet? As far as kind of length of pilot, all those things that you would throw in a pilot?
You know, I think it's it's still being determined. And I'm going to say that at this point, it was referred to as a pilot. So at this point, I think that I probably need to sit down uh with the town manager and review this in more detail. Um I've given you the highlights of what I heard and understand. But in terms of being more detailed or formal, I would need to talk to the town manager.
We've had a number of issues and concerns about music. I'll leave it at that. Thank you. I think the town's done enough work. I appreciate the new schedule that we have for the housing element. But uh I think HCD can clearly see there's a lot of work being done and and it should not be an issue. And that's great that they take the ninety days, right? Because it gives us more, let them take as much time as they need. It it helps us out. Um if that's the end of director and staff comments, do commissioners have comments or requests that it shouldn't be?
Yes, I do. Um I want to thank the planning director for sending out the handbook or providing a hard copy of the handbook for everyone. And that's helpful for our new planning commissioner. Um and also the chapter out of the code that deals with the planning commission. Um there was one piece of that I thought I would raise um oh that kind of goes along with that chapter on the planning commission. And that's when we have an ordinance, because it always comes up if we're looking at um recommending an ordinance that are um are voting on that is not a simple majority. So I just wanted um to raise that, that uh seventeen oh four one hundred print D talks about if we're evaluating um a draft ordinance to um recommend that to the town council, there's a higher standard for um approving that. So I just wanted to to put that out there for everyone.
Not seeing any other hands raised up. There's.
Just a detail. I see we have no meeting minutes for this meeting. Okay, thank you.
You'll have two next meeting.
Just making sure.
Don't be sad. There'll be two meetings to review next next meeting.
And I'm I'm taking my Rezo notes with me, Linda, for when we review those. Uh I leave the staff reports, but I'll take just my my Rezo comments with me so we can uh look them over and compare. Hey then, uh good meeting. We get home before midnight tonight. That's wonderful.
Uh I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Wonderful. Can we have a second on that?
A second.
Can we do just all in favor, raise your hands to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, staff. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Tamela and the public out there.